Waiting for that red light.
Not going to be a crowd for the.
Where do you want your R mark?
What's that?
Not a crowd for the public hearing.
All right, call to order the December 3rd, 2024 meeting of the Long Lake City Council. Good evening, all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Joyce is absent with prior notice. We'll start with item two, which is a pledge of allegiance, please join me.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three is mayor comments, Long Lake News, meeting review and updates. So we, our city council last met a week ago, so not a whole lot to report in last week, other than a lot of, you know, holiday festivities as, as tis the season here. For starters, we just finished a work session where we discussed proposed 2025 city utility and recycling rates. That'll be an item on our agenda tonight as well, seven A, so we'll talk a little more about that coming up. Other than that, we had Thanksgiving, of course, so hopefully everybody had a great Thanksgiving, was able to celebrate with family and or friends and have some time off of work and all those great things and our city staff was off. So I hope you enjoyed time with, with your families. Had a massive decoration. Chambers look a bit different. And lit up, so thanks to. Elf. Member was. Work looks. Hopefully folks at home can, can see that a bit. So with that. Lots of holidays events coming up here, so for starters, this Friday at 5:30 PM at Holbrook Park is our city sponsored holiday tree lighting event from 5:30 to 7:30. We put out some information on that already, but I know staff will put out a reminder in the coming day or two, I would imagine. We've got a great event lined up, thanks to our park board for planning that. Here Santa might be making a, an appearance this year. And this, besides that, the actual tree lighting aspect of it, so that's on Friday, 5:30, Holbrook Park. On Saturday, the following day, Long Lake Fire Department Auxiliary is hosting their annual food and toy drive at Long Lake Fire Department Station One, that'll be from nine to noon. And I hear Santa will be at that event as well, so that is always a great event, a great Santa at that event. And there again, food and toy drive, more information on Facebook about that, encourage residents to bring a donation of food and or toys. And then ongoing, more ongoing is Long Lake Holiday Home Decorating Contest, our annual event. I know city staff is very, very close to sending information on that, we're doing some great work lining up some sponsors for some gifts for participants, so look for email information about that in the next probably 24 hours or so, and we'll make sure that's on social media as well. Lots of great events coming up that are holiday specific and a good time to, to celebrate the holidays. So other than that, yeah, no other major updates again in the. That will move on to item number. Prove this evening's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I can second.
Motion and a second, thank you. Discussion. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item five is the consent agenda tonight. Items A through C on the consent agenda, including adoption of 2025 tobacco licenses and 2025 liquor licenses. Any questions for staff regarding items on the consent agenda this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item six, open correspondence, open correspondence item on the agenda in which the public may address the city council. No formal actions taken by the city council and comments limited to five minutes or less. And open correspondence comments may be emailed to city staff by noon on the day of the council meeting. Any submitted open correspondence this evening?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. With that, move on to item seven, regular business. Seven A, adoption of new city utility and recycling rates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This year, I am recommending a few additions and increases in our utility. It is important as a city continue to maintain. Fund balances that are. That are staying current with unforeseen expenses. So in 2025, we have been notified that our Metropolitan Council Treatment Cost will. Thirty-nine, thirty-four percent. Our total. Cost of to $351. I'm twenty, I'm sorry, $350. $325. To this increase. It will be adding residential organics collections. We're hoping that this will be a benefit to our residents as they will no longer have to pay their garbage haulers for this service. So some of the, some of the rate increases that I am currently recommending would be our water. In our water fund, I would be recommending a 1.75% increase on the base charges and each of the tiers. This would have a very minor impact on our residents. But I feel like it would help us sustain growing costs in the fund. For sewer rates, I would like to recommend that we continue to implement the Met Council Treatment Fee by, by increasing. To $31. That would cover our city's costs of $355,000. I would like to help our residents with this cost by starting to include the first 2,000 gallons of sewer at no cost to them. This could be up to a $15 savings for each resident. Surface water, I would like to just do a very minor increase of 10 cents for residential and a 5% increase for commercial. Recycling, like I mentioned, we will be adding the organic space charge of $4.25. But to help offset that cost for our residents, I would like to recommend decreasing the recycling costs from 750 down to $7. These are my recommendations, I have included a new. In your. Any questions for me? The great. Recommendation.
Did you say that the addition of the organic? Could be less than what they're currently being charged?
Hearing. We don't. Individual haulers, what they're. Resident. Are paying. The low. Resident tells that they're paying with $7, we believe that some are actually paying more than that. That was a fee that was added to the residents' holler bills, garbage holler bills in 2024. And many of them are quite concerned about these fees.
And it's required?
It is required.
The resident cannot opt out?
They cannot opt out, it is required by Hennepin County that every single resident, that is offered to every single resident in, in Minnesota, you have to pay it whether or not you participate or not, there's no option to opt out in this situation.
So. Tricky little state statute that Hennepin County's organics mandate triggered.
And so we've, we've decided that by having a citywide organics contract, we were able to offer our residents a discount by just having one, one holler that would handle the entire city.
Will residents have to next year, will they have to contact their hauler? Will the city contact?
I can help with that one.
This, yes, I will, I'm gonna.
This one is very much my baby, so actually everyone in your utility. That are actually going to be going out in. Receiving an. On one side has. Recycling schedule and on the opposite side has a 2025 organics collection schedule and information. And what it will tell you is for those that were able to, who are already enrolled in organics, specifically those who are enrolled with Republic Services, we already have your information, I think there were maybe sixteen. About. On two ways management, they're going to get you enrolled and they're going to take care of it. So you're going to get that. They'll take care of your transition. February 7th, you'll be. Being cared of weekly with your collection with waste management. Communication issue with curbside waste, so we are encouraging curbside waste customers who are participating in organics to reach out to us. Us will be that any. Who wants to participate in organics. Contact. And I will be one. Our. To set up. That will give us the cleanest. Handle on the number who are participating because this is a scaled contract. Need to know exactly. Participating. But when we. What we learned is that. By going, by locking into a citywide contract amount with one provider, we were able to make sure that we can provide that service at less than what the unpredictable unknown of all the haulers being prepared to provide the service, but not knowing what number that could be, could offer that at. So the haulers, to my understanding, have been charging anywhere between $7 and $8 a month on their billings to their Long Lake customers to provide that service, whether you participate or not. And our proposal is to be providing that at $4.25. If our participation level turns out to be significantly higher than we anticipate, we may need to revisit that in the future. But we do anticipate we're going to be saving you about $3 right away.
Can I, so Charlie, was your question, so will the line item on individual haulers drop out in favor?
It should be coming off, it should not be on your bill in January.
Automatically?
It should be, correct, I have notified the haulers. I am a little concerned with communication with one hauler in particular, but I have no concerns with waste management and Republic Services. That communication has been very good, so.
And it will be a separate line item on the city of Long Lake?
Yes.
So you'll see it as a separate line item.
Yes.
Saying organics.
And again, in going out to RFP and locking in for a new organics contract, that also helped us to bring down our recycling a little bit, so instead of 750, that's going to be coming down to seven. Now those are this, you know, individual household rates, apartment rates would, for multifamily would be actually going up a little bit. Multifamily will have the opportunity to opt in, again, at a reduced rate versus, you know, what they would be paying otherwise. They would be working with me on that, so.
With my recommendations of the utility rates, a residential household would have an impact around $10 per month on their utility bills. That $10 does include the $4.25 organic charge that will be added. We, we are hoping that our residents. That this is not. We also encourage them, if they do have questions or concerns about any of the line items in their bills, that they do not hesitate to contact me whether by phone or email because I'm. Hear their. Explain to them the individual items if there are any confusion, if there's any confusion.
And council may recall, we had, Amanda and I had worked together on quite the handout that we put up on our website to explain when we revisited rates for 2024. And we'd put together what we worked towards being a really clear explanation of our rate structure to be clear and convenient. And we would do a revised version of that again to also reflect how the organics component. The billing structure. Probably spend a little. Council.
Correct.
Sewer impact as well, so we would work together on redoing that.
And that would go out with the January, first week of January. And residents would not see any effect on their bills until February. That is the bill that they receive. Services. Not see the, any new rates until their February bill.
We had quite a bit of discussion about this during our work session and, and yeah, we appreciate staff who's always been. With our rates are trying to figure out ways to save and make them more fair. A big one is the Met Council Treatment Rates that were charged by the Met Council and those are increasing significantly for 2025, at least for our city. And so you've identified making that more of a pass through, it'll show up kind of separately on their, on their bills and clearly see what that amount is. So. Draw attention. And we're gonna look into and find out why exactly is that, are the Met Council rates going up? Or I think was it? Dollars increased just for our city alone and find out more why, why that. We can't really change that per se, but at least find out why, be able to pass on that information to residents if they ask about that, why that's increasing so much. So I appreciate all of that and all the breakdowns you've kind of done and yeah, it'll be an increase, but we're trying to keep the budgets in the, the black. Money that would, that's spent towards water and sewer infrastructure and upkeep and everything.
Yeah, like as, as you mentioned, like the Met Council people know, there's not. Other than minimizing I and I and how much sewer water we have to treat and their. Project. Recently. Help some. Trying to control, that we can't control, we're trying to, but, but yeah. It is a brutal increase, it's like 40% this year. Crazy.
And in the packet as well, I have included a cash balance trend. So council and our residents can see that. Our cash. We are not sitting, the water fund right now has a large. But we are, because of that, we are going to continue. Not. Water funds. At the level that our expenses are raising because we understand that the other funds would, would need the, would need the revenue a little bit more. As you can see, we're not sitting with a lot of money in any of our cash funds, but enough that I feel like we're being fair to our residents and hopefully covering our costs.
And I think it is great to echo the point that we're kind of dividing who, what the expenditure is and why it's being charged to the resident and it shows who, what that charge is, the Met Council fee is broken out, that's a direct fee that the city has to pay to have their sewer treated.
Absolutely. As a city is that as we continue doing some. And so forth, that that fee actually goes down, it is our hope with the. Fee can go down and therefore residents. To pass through. Our costs go down, the residents' costs go down for that. It doesn't just get. Not by other expense.
Cleanliness of accounting standpoint, to not be. To account for that Met. So. In part with. That council treatment fee and in part. But solely. Treatment fee. Easier as. Our billings and know what our obligation. You know, there's a direct and clean correlation on an.
If we could get the Met Council, Representative. Council in to attend a meeting, that'd be really helpful because we could understand projections for treatment, how much water did, what was the increase, was it all related to the increase of? Volume treated or what are the increases, so just kind of.
Absolutely, and I, even if they could even let us know what residents can do from their standpoint, you know, if they have any recommendations for us in the city or as an individual user, it would be nice to know if we have any control at all.
It'd also be really nice to know if we can ask them how they can do better.
I think we could give them a year.
Well, and even the new software, like switching to monthly billing, I think that could, that could help too in reducing that, that leakage, if you have a toilet leaking, it's noticed more quickly in, you know, one month versus three months and, and you have software using to try to track that and you're proactively notifying residents when you notice an anomaly in their usage and so that's a really great thing too and a tool that we didn't have a year or two ago, I would say.
I have been so impressed just watching the implementation of that change, I mean. I, my role is basically to help get the mailings out, that's just about it, you know, I help with the physical side of that and getting them out the door, but just sitting next to it and watching the transactions and how things are flowing. The contact with residents, the, oh hey, I can just generate this quick report now, these email fields are filled in, I can copy paste and send a blind copy email to everybody and let them know, hey, I'm about to impose late fees. I mean, we're from a workflow perspective, I have been very impressed with how this has gotten better and better over this year and how many leaks you have caught, like I've, I get to overhear those conversations. It is so much better to catch those after one month than after three, like a $73,000 or 73,000 gallon leak. Imagine what that bill would have been after three months of usage. That would have been a very difficult burden to bear. So yeah, it's been a really positive change, it, it was a workload change that was very worth it in the long run.
Yes. And I think, I think we continue to build relationships with our residents and so I hope that most of them do feel comfortable contacting me directly if they have questions or concerns. Because they won't know if they don't ask. And I prefer you contact me directly than talk to everybody, you know, don't talk. On social media, just ask a question. So I, I would really. Understand that, that. Any, any questions or concerns they have, I'm, I will listen.
We do have just a couple of people who tell us that they like that they get to come see us more often.
Yes.
That's good, that's a compliment.
Yeah.
Any other questions for me, I know I went kind of fast, but like you, like you mentioned, we did go in detail on the work session. Line by line, so.
Not for me, any other questions?
Thanks for doing that, Amanda.
Oh, absolutely, I apologize for, if anyone is looking at the packet, there is an error in, in my spreadsheet on the 2025 bill amount, please disregard that, that should have said bill impact, so.
We can fix that actually for the E packet if we want, if anybody wants to look at the materials online.
That would be wonderful.
Let's do that, yep, we'll do that.
To eliminate any confusion for the residents, so we will fix that and have it corrected.
Right.
Spreadsheet, thank you.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-53, establishing water, sewer and stormwater utility rates and establishing curbside residential recycling and residential organics recycling rates. Second. Thank you, motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, Mayor, if I can just mention one thing before we move on to the next agenda item. At the next meeting, we are going to have a public hearing on an ordinance amending provisions of our, or chapters of our code related to organics, we're, you know, of course, completing those steps we have to complete of removing the mandate that haulers provide organics and just reflecting that, you know, in our utility rates, we're going to be charging for organics as well. That ordinance is not really something that, while yes, we have to have a public hearing, it's not really something we can avoid doing, it's something we really have to do to complete the steps, so when you receive that in your packet, if you have any questions, I want to just encourage you to reach out right away so that if there's anything I need to change or update before the meeting, we can do that. It's going to be really routine stuff, basically, you know, striking through things and adding the word organics in a place here or there, but just wanted to let you know that that's going to be coming forth so we can get that knocked out at the end of this year.
Okay, thanks for the forwarding on that. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number seven B, public meeting discuss proposed 2025 budget and levy. Just going to walk us through this, Scott?
Yes, I will, thanks, Mayor. So this is the time of the year we get to have our truth and taxation meeting, the state requires us to allow a public meeting for the residents to discuss with the council their impacts to their taxes that are property tax related to the current budget. And that also gives us the opportunity to kind of talk through the considerations that were. To create the 2025 budget that they did reflective on their property tax for 2025. And so some of the 25 budgeting factors was, you know, state aid, our local government aid, some communities surrounding us do receive some money through the state, but City of Long Lake does not. It's just, I continue to put this on the, the slide for hopes that one day we will get some LGA, but you know, as of right now, we haven't been receiving any. We do expect the revenue for permitting to stay relatively flat. We don't see any large developments happening in 2025, you know, Avavetta, you know, the borough and some of the other large developments we had that have been put into ground, I don't see any permit really large revenue coming in from there, but I do see revenues coming in for remodeling and upgrading. We are seeing a lot of homes being updated with just of the current climate, so you'll see a re-ruffs, porches, etc., fences, permitting those like that. Also, that was budgeted is a 3% COLA adjustment for the city employees. There is a couple of maintenance workers that are still on the salary step program, so you'll see slight 2% increases as they increase on their annual. You want to say their anniversary of their employment. There was some talk over in 2024 and maybe in '23 that there could be possible COLA increases bo, above the 3% that has already been budgeted, but that is something that staff and council can talk about later. I know that with the surrounding areas, not everybody's getting 3%, but most people are getting 3+. So our insurance premiums were budgeted 10%. We did find, when we did this in 20, or in September, we didn't know what the percentages were, but we're really close to that 10% so we're not going to be too far off of our final budget in December related to insurance premiums. So in 2025, our preliminary, or sorry, in September, we approved a 2025 preliminary levy of the $1,745,661. That was an increase of $168,000 from 2024, which was a 10.65% increase from 2024's final budget levy. And so the tax capacity increased around $500,000 from 4.7 million to 5.2 million. So that $168,000 increase to the levy or the 10.65% in the adjusted net tax capacity results in a no to a flat tax rate. And you'll see that that's been the council's option is trying to get it to a tax rate that stays the same or can go down and even try even going at a 10% or less. Impact, so here's the history of our, our levies over the handful of years, you can see from 2023 to 2025, we're, we're trying to keep it at flat and as you see from '21 to '22, they actually reduced a little bit over the course of those two years. We've had some expenses come up in the last couple of years that we were believing that, you know, this 10% or flat tax rate is justifiable, but again, this is the max that it can go, we can always reduce it from the preliminary levy, we cannot increase it without, you know, special reasoning and as of right now, there's no see, no reason to have any increases above the preliminary levy. Some of the other items that the council may take in consideration in 2025 is some city hall building upgrades that would come on the general fund, the rehabilitation of well one is actually scheduled and participated, or anticipated to come out of the 601, that was the one that you saw that previous, at the work session and, and the previous rate or rates indicated that fund is actually sitting pretty well and can have, can adapt and afford those increases, or I'm sorry, those expenses for those upgrades. One we still don't understand yet for sure is what the future fire department expenses are looking like. We have some different momentum happening here with the, with some possible negotiations, but there is probably going to be some new, maybe new equipment upgrades that we have not been done yet. And one also item is Public Works is looking to replace the mowers this spring. It's not a huge expense, it's just something that we want to keep the council informed of if we decide to move forward with that. And that will be probably narrowed down a little bit more related to the final budget and where are we going to start maybe anticipating if we do have certain surpluses based on the overall budget, where are we looking to put that money? So there will be recommendations at the final, final budget and then we have to do that by the end of December, which is right now is scheduled for December 17th, that will go through the full felt budget. That will go through the full-fledged budget and look at what our final levy is going to be. And this is an opportunity for the public to put any input in, but it doesn't look like there's too many people in the audience, so is there any questions from the council?
Boy, we really have increased the budget from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-five.
Yes.
From about a million to getting, creeping up close to two million.
And yeah, we're starting, and a lot of that has just been overall inflation. Sad thing is like, yeah, I mean, that looks, looks large, but between the salaries, a lot of workers' comp, just the overall expense of operating.
Health insurance.
Health insurance. It's like, it's not like, you know.
One thing in particular.
Yeah, it's just, it just, one year is one thing, next year is this one, and then this one. So I mean, like, health insurance, you know, alone has catastrophically increased along with workers' comp. I mean, those kind of are all related to employees. Additional one or two employee FTEs, you know, kind of adds into that too, so. It's all part of just straight operations with no, you know, fringe, you know?
Well, and our cost for fire is going up next year, right, because of the reduced ORNO coverage areas.
Yeah, percentage breakdown from the current contract. Yep, and that's something that
Be interesting to see, you know, a, a inflation column on here to for each year to see how it compares, because inflation was significant the last couple of years.
And that was kind of the thing, is we tried keeping up with it. I think kind of inflation still is increasing a little bit. They keep saying it's transitory, but you know, for it to come down is going to be a lot, another three to four years if you're watching anything, you know, related to the futures, but and that's, if it happens, I mean.
I was looking at some comparison data for other cities and what they're raising their, their percent increase for next year in area cities. And we're, you know, kind of in the middle of the pack from what I recall. There was, you know, like, like Loretto was talking to some folks from Loretto this morning. They're like twenty percent increase next year, but it's, they have such a small budget, it's not, you know, much different than our overall on the amount of our increase dollar-wise, but that's it's challenging with staff increases and, you know, labor costs increasing for, you know, a lot of police, you know, police salaries are increasing and fire and amongst other staff. It's not getting any cheaper to run a city and that's why we look at consolidation or look at, you know, sharing resources and things like that.
So how come the debt service went up like from twenty-four? Did we add new debt or?
No, it's, it's prorated, so the way they really put the scale out at just a little bit every year to then by the time it gets to payoff and then as you can see from Twenty-Twenty and Twenty-One, a debt bond got paid off, so you're not doing that anymore. It's just the way that they have it scaled.
Okay.
So is that for a bond that, how, how long does that go? Does that?
Um, that's for all of them, so that'll be for Twenty-seventeen and Twenty. Yes, we only have two of it, so it's Twenty-seventeen, the two million dollar one that we did for Consol and Twelve. And I think it's Twenty-fourteen or Twenty, I don't know, they're going for another ten years.
That was Watertown, wasn't it?
Watertown. Might have been Watertown, Twenty-seventeen, Twenty-Fifteen, something like that.
All right.
So I guess that's all I have.
Don't need to wait to like bang the gavel and say the public hearing is now open.
Nope, it's, nope, it's just an opportunity to let individuals to come to the front and stand in front of the council, but it doesn't need to be anything. That's the only, that's the only action that you had to do today.
Okay.
There is no motion. It is an opportunity for public comment, public discourse.
We pass it next time, right?
Yes.
Up to finally, we'll go through a whole bunch at the next one. We, I do, we'll have a way more time, way more to look at, but then you'll be approving the final levying budget.
I still, I, I always say this, but I still would like to see it at single digits.
There, there's a possibility of that happening. I just don't want to promise anything.
This is a unique year because there's so much uncertainty with fire and we know it's going to go up, right?
Well.
And we have attorney's fees that we have
That we've already paid and may have future pay.
And more.
Yeah, we will need to add those in the budget. I feel like we add those.
And I think there was a question in the ORNO council meeting, what happens to the money you collect that you don't use?
Yeah.
I heard that, yeah.
Just it goes in the budget. So maybe we can reduce it the following year.
Right, true to that. Okay, well, some other questions, we'll move on then. Item Seven C, Updates Regarding Fire Department Matters. I guess just a reoccurring item on our agenda. We had a last update last week and no real major updates since then, I would say. Just, I just noticed there was a Laker Pioneer article the other day about, you know, mound, the city mound and discussions that are occurring out there regarding a potential fire creation, the new fire district. The mound mayor commented on that and maybe pulling this committee together to look at options for creating a fire district with surrounding communities. So just good to see that that's happening over there and some good forward movement to, to the, the west of our communities. Besides that, I don't have any specific fire updates. Anybody else?
Can I ask a question? So was mound kind of looking at St. Bonnie?
Correct. I think St. Bonnie Fire and mound Fire are kind of merging and becoming a, a fire district of some sort in the future, exactly. And I know there's still lively discussions going on with, you know, active discussions going on with, between West Suburban Fire and Maple Plain Fire as well, so. See where those wind, wind up, but it's definitely positive, positive signs occurring around us.
And so what, in terms of the grant that we got to study possible cooperation with Long Lake, with Wayzata?
Yeah, maybe Scott can give us a quick update on that, just.
Um, yeah, so as of right now, I'm still waiting for them to create a log. There's a log and I have to go through the, the website through the Department of Public Safety and still kind of waiting on that email. I followed up with them today and I haven't heard back, so. That's one part of it. I did have one draft of an RFP that I sent off of John Thames, but it was a really rough draft, so I want to get some of his opinion on it. I will be meeting with Jeff Dahl, their city administrator, on Thursday for coffee, so we can kind of chat about it a little bit too, but I don't want to get too I need a little bit more input from them before I get anything related to the council, so. I kind of want to chat with him a little bit and see what the game plan is going to be.
Great, good update. Okay. With that, let's move on then to Item Eight, Other Business, around consumer quality.
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right. Not so much for me.
I wanted to ask about Midco Fiber Optic that is being laid in ORNO throughout the city of ORNO, and I'm wondering why they wouldn't have like approached Long Lake since we're surrounded by ORNO. And I'd be, I'd like for, I don't know how, you know, who would contact them or what, but I think we ought to try to get on that list. Because it would, I mean, fiber optic would be a good thing, and also having a second provider would be a good thing.
Maybe we can just drop an email to Jim Lundberg and see what he knows about what's going on there.
Okay, because they're, they're doing all of ORNO. I mean, it's going to take a couple of years, but I think, but they have some sort of agreement with ORNO, so it makes sense. I would think it would be in their best interest to, hey, you know, let's
Oh, you're here. Well, and they're not competing, but, because is MediaCom built out of ORNO? Because maybe they're not competing. Because I know Min, LMCC has been approached, but not for Long Lake.
Right.
They're for possibly
Wasn't it grant-driven? Wasn't it, wasn't it a connection and grant-driven by the state of Minnesota through the first part of the inner ring and then the outer ring? For some reason, I thought it was all grant-driven.
Oh, is it?
Well, I watched, I watched the Midco presentation at the ORNO meeting last week, and, and they said they're focusing on the West Hennepin suburbs, you know, and so they're, they're kind of expanding, right, they're, so.
Yeah, I spoke with Jim Lund about that maybe two months ago, and he said that they had, Midco's approached the LMCC and seeking a franchise agreement with the LMCC. So we're represented by the LMCC, which is, you know, why, and ORNO is not, so that's why Midco has approached ORNO separately. But for the LMCC represented cities, Midco is, is very interested in building out, including in Long Lake and other communities, is what I last heard about it.
I'm dropping Jim an email right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I would, I would think the city should have a choice in, in that, right? I mean, just, so you're saying LMCC is not, and have any kind of agreement with Midco, therefore the LMCC cities aren't?
No, maybe the opposite. The LM, the Midco is working with the LMCC on, on getting an agreement in place so that they can potentially cover all of the LMCC cities, including Long Lake with their, with their fiber.
But it's going to, it's a business decision for Minco, like, does it make sense for them to go into this community?
Again, I don't know, they're, they're going to be all around us, so I don't know why it wouldn't.
Well, the density in Long Lake also was higher. You think it would be a no-brainer just to drop the lines.
Anyway, I'd, I'd be interested in that because you know, like
Sure.
The download and upload speeds will be much better. In fact, they kind of match when, when with fiber optic, or what do they call it? But balanced.
And just at the up and down or?
You know, you know how download is always ten times faster than upload? Well, I've been on a fiber optic one and it's like, they were the same, and it's like, and they were like, hi, and I was like, wow, that'd be nice.
Yeah, and I've heard that, that what we have now for cable.
MediaCom.
I've heard that they're making steps to get more fiber in our area as well and kind of expand their fiber network. But yeah, I think two would be, both, two providers would be great, old competition, exactly.
That's all I have.
Got it? All right, um, yeah, nothing, nothing else for me other than all these events coming up here this week and more to come from more communications come on that, so thanks to staff for that. Scott, anything?
I don't think I have anything, unless you can think of something that I forgot.
If we stay here long enough, I could, but no, that's, that's, that's okay. Amanda?
Um, I was just going to let council know that tomorrow we start our preliminary audit for Twenty-Twenty-Four. Um, I've been working with auditors last couple of years. I like to get our audit done right away. So we start preliminary already tomorrow, and then I'm hoping to have it wrapped up January, February.
Is it still with ABDO?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, we worked to get it done much faster. For me, it's easier because I remember the questions when they ask. And so, yeah, well, they'll be out here tomorrow to just kind of start their prelim and, and I believe we've already got it scheduled. I believe it's January, so we'll have our Twenty-Twenty-Four audit done very quickly.
That's great.
Excited.
Congrats, great.
Thank you.
All right.
Last year, I think we even beat some of the, they had to hold off bringing it to council because there was a couple of things that weren't released yet on, on the larger scale that they had to, we were all done, they just had to wait for a couple of things before they could bring it to you, so that is good news.
Yeah, awesome.
Yes.
All right, Jeanette.
Just got another sponsor on the holiday lighting contest.
Ooh, good. That's great.
Thank you, Liquor Barn. So far, our sponsors are Liquor Barn, Birches on the Lake, the New Books Pub, and Gopher Ace. So that's four sponsors already. Just like to thank them very much for their generosity.
In the nick of time.
And do you have some more messages out, but just always want to express so much gratitude to those businesses because they really do make that special for our contest winners, so thank you for that. I think that's about it for me.
Okay, so our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, December seventeenth. Probably have either EDA or work session that evening to be determined.
I suspect we're going to have a work session.
Okay.
Just so we can do more budget talks and get a little bit clarity and so it doesn't take so long.
That's what I have lined up. And additionally, whether on the regular agenda, I think we're going to have that one a little bit stacked. We have the cannabis ordinance that I know John already reviewed with the council. That'll be going to Planning Commission and then coming back to council. We'll have, you know, the organics, that's pretty routine. We also will want to do a little recognition there for council member Joyce. I do have a plaque already ready for her.
Oh, great.
Um, so I don't know, maybe we want to take a few minutes in the work session just to visit with her informally, whether that's before or after the budget chit-chat, so maybe we will
So you're seeing pizza.
Maybe we want to
Yeah, I need pizza to visit informally.
And especially talk about the budget. I mean, we had to kind of go hand in hand.
Talk about that, but maybe we want to plan to start that work session at five to allow for a little informal friendly time with Gina to, you know, as well in there, not just all budget talk, so.
That'd be nice. Should appreciate that.
And then we'll do the formal plaque presentation at the regular meeting.
Okay, great. Sounds good.
So what about the EDA? Was, did anybody else come back? Were this, because there were two proposals. Did the second person, the first one didn't work out? Did the second one come back?
We'll just sit on it a while.
What?
We'll just sit on it a while.
Honestly, we need it for snow storage.
That's a good idea. You could do a, a snow sculpture there, you know, with all the snow you pile up.
There you go. If it turns out to be a snow a year, little art, snow art contest.
Ice castle or something.
Yep. Yep, no, Sean does actually use it every year, you know, if we get snow, that's where they put the snow from the downtown. They haul it over and drop it there, so.
I think that's nice. Because I know I've heard input from other, from some of the businesses and it's really hard to kind of know where. It takes away parking.
Yes, yes. For them to have that available for snow storage has been very useful these many years, so it's nice they'll have that one more year.
With the cooler temperatures, what's the plan with, with Holbrook and the rink this year?
What cooler temperatures? It's going to be forty degrees this weekend. There's no cooler temperatures.
Tomorrow is going to be cold, but yeah, that's
No, it's supposed to be relatively warm for the next fifteen days. It won't hold water.
Oh, okay.
But we're, we're watching it, so we're trying to, I mean.
We haven't heard more from the Hockey Association regarding any kind of collaboration.
No, the only thing we're, you know, still waiting for some of those sport, sporting grants to come back that we applied for.
Right, yeah.
What sporting grants?
Well, one was that I think for, maybe for equipment for the ice skating rink, and then also we, you know, sub sub, supported the one for the dome for their HVAC and a whole bunch of other things that they're looking to do.
Oh, the dome?
For the school, the school that's there?
Soccer.
Mm-hmm, yes, for a soccer facility.
Okay. All right, last call. All right, if there's no objection, I'll adjourn the meeting by general consent. Harry Dunn, meeting is adjourned at seven nineteen PM.
I won't make the tree lighting because I'm going to go to Alexandria for Suns basketball tournament.